Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Williams has the dog. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August 22 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Williams has our dog from our dog kennel this morning.
We got a beagle here, male, found over by Fligners in Lorraine, so smart dog knows where to go to get some good eating. And we have 28 dogs in our kennel, so if you could come out on Saturday after 3 o'clock, adopt this dog, and I think it's the first beagle I haven't heard howling in a while, so, good boy.
Very friendly.
Friendly, looking for a nice home, so please come out and help us out at the kennel.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Under Resolution Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Corporations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, is anybody here from the Auditor's Office, by chance? No? I don't know if you guys noticed, but there was, on number 107, 8.12, they had 54 office chairs that the Auditor is purchasing, and they're like $447 apiece, which I thought was kinda high. I know it's, they have it state bid, but I don't know, did 54 office chairs get ruined at one time at the Auditor's Office? What, I mean, I didn't get a chance to call them yesterday, I didn't get a return call yesterday, so...
Well, we'll go ahead and put that...
Can we hold that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Can we hold...
So amended to hold 107, 8.12?
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners' authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner, I do have a couple issues for executive session. There's potential new hire at the Collection Center, obviously a couple of hires at Golden Acres, we've seen they'd be having a bit of a revolving door with some of the STNAs. Also, possibly we have time to update you on our strategy for getting ready for labor negotiations in September, and potential sale of real estate. All of those topics are allowable for executive session discussion, so I'd ask for the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and talk about those items, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait the reading of the same County Commissioners' meeting minutes of August 15.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorized payment $1,000 for Lorraine Cool Home for funerals, Lorraine for Jerry Lynn Sands, Lorraine Indigent Veteran in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5901.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Community Development Award Contracts to J.A. Kilby Enterprises Inc., North Ridgeville, for homeowners to receive grant assistance for renovation structures from CHIP FY10 private owner rehab activity, which includes contingency for any unforeseen changes to be paid from account CHIP Home Funds House Rehab. One, John Darling at 4834 Orzy Avenue Sheffield, in the amount of $29,728. Eight invitations to bid were sent out to receive this being most responsive compliance specifications. Two, David and Diane Burl in Grange, in the amount of $35,943. Five invitations were sent out to receive this being most responsive compliance specifications.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Don, do you wanna, do you have any information about these? Is it multiple repairs? Cause it doesn't specify what these grants were for.
Both of these projects, Commissioners, are multiple repairs with roofing on both of them, as well as some various other electrical. We have, as you heard, had successfully recruited another person who's been bidding, Jen Mett, so that was how we ended up now with having two, and we're continuing to do our outreach to increase the number of bidders that we have, and we're very pleased to have one of them begin to submit bids.
I see it had to be done by the 31st or something, they agreed to do that.
Correct.
Do we send out to the BIA and let them know?
We've let them know, we also do an annual meeting that's advertised, I also, for contractors to come in, and then also we accept applications throughout, and I'm always talking to everybody who will listen, as far as any construction person I find, I give them my card, I give them an application, sometimes they'll fill them in, we continue to go through our list and make sure we're not missing anyone, that CT Consultants has the same list we do, and we keep expanding it to the best of our ability.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized interagency agreement with children services for child welfare services using Title 20 federal block grant funds in the amount of $300,000 effective retroactive July 1, 2012 through June 30, 2013. Authorized Director execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors to form and amend for changes in program content and increased value.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Dunbar Armored Inc., Cleveland, to provide armed car courier service for pickup and delivery of cash and checks for Child Support Enforcement Agency. Cost is $300 and 30 cents per month, plus miscellaneous fees if incurred, and will be three one-year renewal options at maximum annual increase of 5% effective September 1, 2012 through August 13, 2013. Authorized Director to execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors to prove us to form and amend for changes in program and content and increased value.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Shopping Center Maintenance Company Illyria to provide swooping services for agency parking lots, effective September 1, 2012 through August 31, 2013, in the amount of $930, and will be two one-year renewal options at maximum annual increase of 5% based on satisfactory performance and availability of funds. Authorized Director execute on behalf of the Board of Prosecutors to prove us to form and amend for changes in program and content and increased value.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Transit, establish a trial basis route to Cleveland.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I did speak to our Director of Transit this morning, just to verify the, I wasn't really sure whether I wanted to go forward with this or not, but I did talk to her, and she said that if we don't start using our transit buses, if we will stand to lose seven of them if we don't do something. So this is an opportunity to save some of our rolling stock, and $30,000 of general fund will create $60,000, and it will give us an opportunity to at least test to see if this would be a viable solution to getting people back and forth to Cleveland for jobs, schooling, shopping, and also casino gambling. So, like I said last week, I wanted to hold off for another week to just get some more information, and the information that I, I got tipped the scales in favor of going forward with the transit route, so...
I agree, Commissioner. I mean, it's at the point before we give up the stock we have and send it to someone else, we have the opportunity to bring more money into the community and provide a service, and hopefully with advertising and such, we'll be able to bump up the revenue on it. Hopefully it'll be successful.
Mr. Williams? Any comments?
Actually, you know, I wanted to take a look at this, but with the financial situation coming up with the county and our meeting that we had in executive session with the prosecutor last week, I'm gonna be against going through and doing a trial run on this, just I believe that the general fund dollars could be best elsewhere, so...
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, authorize engineer to execute contract being prepared by ODOT with K.E. McCartney and Associates Mansfield for construction management services on safe routes to school project Illyria Township, in the amount of $20,498, paid 100% federal funds.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
I have no additional comments this morning, thank you.
Mr. Davy, Assistant County Prosecutor?
I have no comments for the public meeting, though I do have a matter I'd like to discuss in executive session, concerned pending litigation, so we'll talk about that then.
Commissioners' report.
Okay. Hopefully everybody's having fun at the fair, Monday was the opening day, we attended the breakfast, Mr. Kallo and I, really good, went into our tent, and one of the things that they were doing in solid waste was making paper, so I found out how to recycle paper and make it, it's still wet, I didn't take it out of the plastic, so you can see that. It's a lot of fun tonight, actually, I'll be going back, my nephew, who's on the Sheriff's Department, has a canine, his name is Bricks, and he was at our meeting before, and he's going to be doing a demonstration, so can't wait to go out and see that, and then my niece, Kimberly Gakowski, is going to be in the demolition derby, I believe, on Sunday, so can't wait for that. This past Friday, Mr. Kallo and I attended our OPWC meeting in Carlisle Township, and I'd previously been, voted to be on the NREC Board, which is a National, or Natural Resource Assistance Council, and I'm happy to say that we have been allocated $1.5 million for that project, so we will be meeting short, hopefully soon, to decide how we're gonna expend those dollars. We didn't get any money, that would be a board that I would be on that wouldn't meet, so I'm glad we got some funding for that. Oh, and Thursday, Marcy Capter had a meeting out at Carlisle Charleston Cafe on Broadway in Lorraine for the Northeast Ohio Sustainable Communities, and they had a progress report on what has been achieved since their inception, and they do have some great mapping that they've accomplished, and I'll have to get the website to, maybe next week, and give that to you, cause you can access those on their website, so... Oh, and then Mr. Cortez, I received this copy of the letter, your response to Mr. Nabokowski about the hand swipe for the people with disabilities in the back of the courthouse, or the Justice Center, and he also said if we couldn't do that, cause we don't have the money, I know for that, but are there spaces available that we can give to him? Some handicapped spaces?
What we do with the handicap spaces, cause we have many of them, they, you issued a county handicap pass, and they're first come, first served, we do not give dedicated name spaces, and a lot of the parking on the east side of Court Street contiguous to the courthouse is, doesn't belong to us, it belongs to the city of Illyria, and similarly, the parking in front of the Justice Center belongs to Illyria, and the parking in front of this building belongs to Illyria. People think because it's angled in parking that they automatically assume and think that it belongs to the county, but it doesn't belong to us. So there are the, you know, spots out there for handicap parking, and those people that are eligible for a pass are issued a pass to be able to park in those spots that are designated handicapped by the county. I have no ability to do otherwise with the city parking.
What about, do we have parking in back?
There's some in back and some in the front.
And none of it's ours? I thought we had some in the back.
I'm sorry, let me restate, I may have answered a question that wasn't what you were asking, could you be more specific?
Well, let's see... Has some objection to general, no, there should be, not any objection, nope, that's not it. Disabled parking spaces in our parking lot are in the back of the building, a torturous walk for the seriously disabled, so that's, they don't want it in the back, is that what he's saying?
There's some... Or wants a back entry.
Or back entrance.
Which we don't have because of security purposes, we'd have to put an entire new...
It says, "My employees have been parking in the disabled spaces in front of the building, which are general public, for the general public, recently the city of Illyria has begun enforcement of the two-hour limit in these spaces," so, I mean, I don't know what the answer is, if there's any no-cost answer to this problem.
I don't see one, because if you put a back entry into that, we're going to have to start the scanning process back there, it would probably take another deputy or so also, if we do another entry, did the key code do that?
The, well, here's the problem with the back entries, the absent having security placed at the door, the door tends to be left open, or people tend to use it at times so that they can exit the building or come into the building, we still have some issues with that on some of the back doors, but we do keep them locked from the outside. Could a hand key prevent some of that? Possibly, you could install a coded key system similar to what we use at the entrances, or the main access, so obviously ours is in the back, but that's the main access for employees to the building, and we could limit the access to that. Couple things would happen, first, try putting that in and only giving access to five people, when you have hundreds of people working in that Justice Center, that would not work. I guarantee you, within a few weeks, I was getting told by you guys to give this one access, that one access, and then everybody would, and then we're gonna have more people coming and going through the back door of the building and not going through the security system.
And I don't think the Security Committee would agree with that either.
Well, you know, I know they have, they have less stringent requirements for the people that, you know, come and go from the building to the front than they do for the general public, cause of ID badges and so forth, but I'm not gonna pretend that it could make it easier on those folks, it could, but it's gonna, to make wider access, and then somewhere down the line, either gonna have to take that access away, or put a, you know, magnetron back there, and a security person back there, and it starts out being very simple and gets very complicated within a short amount of time. The, I don't like the way the Justice Center was designed with regard to that type of access either, I don't think there was a lot of foresight given to, you know, the employees exiting and entering the building with respect to where the parking was, and their needs, was more designed around what was currently the Supreme Court's, State Supreme Court's ruling on building security.
What is the cost of a hand reader? Do you know?
I think the last time we put one in, it was about $20,000.
Really?
Well, yeah, they're not inexpensive, I can get you, I can get you more, I know we did one a few years ago, and we just had to replace one of the ones that went out on us, I can get you a more specific cost with regard to that, you can figure 15 to 20,000 dollars, would sound about right to me.
Okay. That's into my report.
You wanna go first this week, Tom?
No, go ahead.
They said they'd let you go first, Jim suggested, let you go first. Yeah, busy week, Commissioner Kowski said we attended the Public Works Committee, next week we'll have our Transportation Improvement District meeting to move forward on the additional funded projects where money was returned and replaced with other funds so we can get more work done. Also, attended, we lost a longtime-serving Illyrian activist, Bill McCray passed away, and there was a great turnout at the Funeral Home Forum Saturday, Bill was a great guy, he left a great legacy, great family. Also attended the Ohio Business College Relay for Life, spoke for the kickoff of that, their mini relay, they're doing a really nice job out there. Lorraine County Blue had a fundraiser for Trooper Paris's family, got to meet his wife, a state trooper at the age of 52, died of a heart attack a few weeks ago, two children, minors, and then his wife. County Fair has been interesting, been a lot of, I don't know, great dialogue, talking to people and such, the sewer issues in Sheffield Township and in Hidden Valley have been a lot of people's questions, actually last night I was speaking to a few of the trustees around the county, and it got brought up. Tom, you got this, you found this old resolution from '75?
Actually, I got a agreement from the city of Lorraine, they stated back to 1974, the mayor sent a letter to Ed Gargus stating that the water would be no more than 30%, and the agreement in Section 12 states that it would be a continual agreement with no end date.
Cause that was the problem, what I found out, and I have to go back, that that was the way Ken Carney explained to me, and looking back through prior to the WACAs and facility planning areas, these were called developer agreements, the developers actually petitioned the city for sewer service, and they cut their own agreement, it was actually perfunctory, went through the planning commission here, and then the Commissioners, as you can see, because I went to Teresa and tried to get all the background on this, there's nothing here, because the Board of Commissioners didn't negotiate developers' agreements, it was an agreement between the municipality, whoever's providing the service, and the developer who was doing the building, so there was never any type of agreement that the Board would have weighed in on at the time, and that's what you found too?
Correct, all they did was approve the agreement between the city and...
Developer and the city of Lorraine, correct.
Did City Council have to act on it at that time then, or not?
Well, there are multiple resolutions and ordinance, and they put a public records request into the city of Lorraine asking for those. So, taking a look at the agreement, looks like the Hidden Valley residents would have a strong case, the problem that's gonna come up is, this is gonna be like the CRA, it's gonna cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars for litigation, and probably take several years, so...
The CRA, what do you mean?
Well, the lawsuit there, you know, with the auditor and that, just another example of a litigation case, that's all.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the sewer, I got a lawsuit, the CRA and the sewer.
No, I'm sorry.
Now, actually, I got it from the other side, just to give you the argument, so I was talking, a developer's agreement, what do we have to weigh in because they have an agreement with a person who's deceased? Mr. Gargus is deceased.
Right.
And is there an ordinance passed in the city of Lorraine that says it would only be 30% over? Go ahead.
I've currently, on behalf of Commissioner Williams, have requested some public records from the city of Lorraine, I think you can more fully answer that question after we obtain those public records, to see what was adopted in the ordinances of the city. Right now, we don't have those, Mr. Williams has asked for those, I think they'll give us a clearer line of sight to what the city accepted, I think you're both on the right track with this, unfortunately, there seems to be, like you said, a developer's agreement. Now, if the city put at least the water one into an ordinance and adopted it as part of their ordinance, I think it probably has some standing, if they merely acknowledged it.
That's, I was asking...
There may be, but there, you know, may be some issues with it, but it may, you know, it may be a basis for further discussion with the city, but I gotta tell you, we've, so far, found nothing on the sewer.
Well, I've asked Ken Carney, go back, I spoke with Jack Januzzi from Sanitary, and gave him some ideas, my thinking based on stuff I read through Commissioners Association in regards to sewers and agreements, and the WACA passed in 1983 or 84 when the FPAs went into effect, this was all wide open territory, who, he who got there first and negotiated a deal basically got a sewer, and I think Sheffield Township is a little bit different than what the developer's agreement is, so I think we have a couple of different issues to look at there, so I don't know, you know, combining them or separately looking at them, and like I said, when Ken was explaining this was a developer's agreement, I wasn't aware of what that was, cause it predates all of us, and Ken said he remembers back in the early 70s when he was doing work for developers, that was a standard practice, where they just negotiated with whoever was going to take the service, and that's how it got done, and it was basically the Commissioners were perfunctory, once planning, recognizing Boards of Commissioners in whatever county, just said, "Okay, we recognize you guys have an agreement." So when we were talking before, it was, "We didn't negotiate a rate agreement for our residents in our sewer dis," it wasn't that way in the 70s, so I think this is something that we're all learning 40-some years later, so I think that'll fall to you, Mr. Davy, and your peers.
Well, I've seen the contract between Gargus and the city of Lorraine, and if the question is, do the Commissioners have any leg to enforce that contract, I think the answer's probably no, that's between a private citizen and the city, you know, where that goes from there, since he's passed away, and there are many homeowners that maybe have standing here, I don't know, I can't advise to that, but as far as the Commissioners getting involved in some sort of lawsuit with the city, I think we need to see what contracts were passed back and forth between Commissioners and the city before we can really advise you one way or the other on that.
That's what I was saying, instead of jumping, you know, into the lake on this with an argument, I think we're better off negotiating, getting all the information, and trying to do the best we can for the citizens of all the communities that are involved, so...
I think that's a good strategy.
Actually, I think we need to just go and speak to each of the council people, I don't think that they even realize the impact, I talked to a couple of them, and I, maybe it was the way it was presented to them, or wasn't fully presented to them, that they may not even realize exactly, you know, how much of an increase they imposed on those people, so, I mean, I think once they realize that, they may be even, you know, they may decide to change their mind and rescind that legislation, I'm hoping.
I'm hoping too, it sounds like Mr. Fowler, who's with the city though, is being very aggressive on it, and talking with several of the residents, actually downright arrogant on it, as far as making statements, "Well, you're really not gonna like what the city's gonna do next," when he's talking with trustees. Hopefully they will do something on it, but it, I know, my opinion and a lot of the residents is, this is nothing more than a money grab from the city of Lorraine, 200%, that's, that's a huge increase for sewer.
It's 100% over in the city rate of, they doubled, cause it was a one...
Right.
They were 50% over the city rate, and then they added again, and made it 100% over city rate. I kept wanting to think, 200% in the paper however it got printed, it didn't make any sense.
Well, they go like Lorco's 110%.
Right, 10% over the resident, right, exact, that's, it was confusing, and 200% seemed like a, one heck of a number to be discussing, and I went back and reread it if you can.
Well, even 100%.
It's double what the city of Lorraine residents are paying.
Correct.
Okay.
When you compare that, where Lorco is only 10% over Avon Lake residents, so, it's, I think a definitely question of the leadership in Lorraine on there, and if they didn't understand what they were doing, that's a shame on them, they should be embarrassed.
I didn't necessarily that, but I mean, again, when you're doing legislation, and you're a city council person, something in regards there where it's generating revenue for your city, you know, and it's presented accordingly, I mean, it's not something you say no to either from the council's point, so I mean, I think it's a matter of sitting down and not calling names, and trying to hammer out an equitable agreement between the two communities, or three communities.
Even the people that received the letter saying that they were going to get an increase didn't realize the impact of the increase until they actually got their bill, so if it's, you know, it affected the, I talked to a couple of residents just this past week, that they got a letter from the city, they're gonna get this much of an increase, and they had no idea that, what the impact, what it really meant until they got their bill, so City Council, you can't fault them either, so I'm not, I'm not throwing stones at anyone, and then I also, when I was at the fair, went into the water, rural water, and spoke to the gentleman in there, and he said that his agreement with water, I think it was, they go through Avon Lake, is they can't raise their rates unless they raise the city, their residents' rate, so it goes hand in hand, and maybe we need to look at something like that, so, you know, the cost and the burden is not just placed on, was it 800 residents to fund this, and it's just, it's way too much, too much of an increase, way too fast.
Well, I mean, that's where we gotta go back and get the agreements out, the public records, and what Ben said, that we've gotta sit down, look back through the paperwork, and sit down and see if we can work out an agreement, so...
Well, I talked with several of the residents, I know attorneys have been contacted, it's something that we're gonna wanna do soon, because they're looking at getting a class action lawsuit against the city.
Well, hopefully, like I said, I'm hoping that, you know, people aren't, don't have to spend the money on attorneys, and we could work this out between just, you know, speaking to council, let them know what the impact is... to council, let them know what the impact is before we start spending money on attorneys.
Well, it, I know the trustees are trying to work with the officials in Lorraine. And emails have been sent out, but no responses.
From council members?
From, well, Mr. Fowler.
I don't, I would, I say skip Fowler and go straight to City Council. Council's king. Fowler's, Fowler's safety service director.
Well, and that's where we, yeah, we definitely want to get in front of council then, we know they took August off for the month.
Right.
So, you have to get in front of them in September. But right now, you're, I'm talking with people, they're seeing anywhere from a $50 to $100 increase.
One lady I talked to had $300, their bill was $300. It's a lot.
That's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money for water.
Especially for when you're not getting any additional benefits, so. Yeah, I feel definitely for the residents in Amber's Township and Sheffield Township, so.
That was the end of my report. I just figured you'd sent this out so I could start the discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's what I've been working on, is talking with the residents in Amber's Township about it. A lot of calls late in the evenings. I think I finished my one call last night around 11 o'clock with the last resident that was upset about this. And again, just the financial hurt that they're seeing on this and unfortunately, there's nothing we can do about it. So I'm glad that we're going to take some action and contact the city. Everything else had been mentioned at the fair. Had a great time out there, took my kids there yesterday. Back to school, I can't believe it. I know your guys, kids are grown and that, but proud moment. My daughter started junior high, first day of junior high and that, so excited to see her go there. And just remember, when you're out driving around, the kids will be out on their bikes riding home from school and everything, so definitely take a look out for them and help all the students and all the teachers have a good school year, so. End of my report.
Next Tuesday, 10 o'clock will be the Transportation Improvement District and 10:30 will be the Stormwater District meeting. For correspondence?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor.
Aye.
Public comment.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, I'd like to refer you back to item number 13 regarding some font Title 20 funds for, to be shared with Children's Services. I'd like to know what the sentence means, "to authorize, direct to execute," I know what that means, the first part of it, "with prosecutor's approval as to form." What does that mean?
That's a standard language. We put in the prosecutor has to approve the contract that it's legal.
What, Shirley, and actually, real simple, they don't agree or disagree whether we need the equipment or the service or the, what's being provided, nor do they say whether it's the most efficient or effective. What they're saying is the construction of the contract meets the legal definition of what we're allowed to enter into.
Isn't that what I said in English?
I understand, okay. That just means that the lawyer is supposed to check it, which he's supposed to do anyway. Okay.
Right.
And I ask, I'd like to comment further. I assume that this is not the only number, monies that the Child Welfare Department gets. Do you have any idea, anybody off the top of their head, how much their, their total budget is?
Child welfare?
Which, which item was this?
Number 13, Child Welfare, Child Welfare Budget Amount. I know it's not, it's more than $300,000.
Oh, well, it's more than $300,000, but there's various pools of monies under the Department of Job-
I can't quite understand you.
There's various pools of money under the Job and Family Services Budget. I don't know exactly what would be in that-
You don't know what it is.
-that end of that line item.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to come up and address the board about any issue? Don, did you have something?
County Commissioners, I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank you for bringing on a new employee in the Department of Community Development, our new Economic Development Coordinator, Dawn Calvert. And I wanted to give a brief introduction so you could begin to put a name and a face together. Dawn came to us from Batel and she worked as an Economic Development Analyst and has been working on different strategies for multiple states, including Nebraska, for targeting industries. She's also worked with the Brookings Institute to be able to quantify the clean economy and the jobs to be created from that. And so she's very talented and brings on a set of skills that currently I do not possess personally and that we don't have at the staff. I'd like to thank you for bringing her on board and to help round out and improve our staff and allow the department to do more and better for the county. With that, I'd like to, if you would, allow her to say a couple of words. Thank you.
Absolutely. Welcome, Dawn.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. I'm very excited to join the county and get a chance to work locally. I live in North Ridgeville, so very happy to work in my own community and looking forward to working with all of you to further the county's economic development efforts.
Thank you. It's good to have you.
You're welcome.
Just so the general public doesn't think we're on a hiring spree, Mr. Metzger has been assigned, you guys, to the Port Authority and will be working with, with the Port Authority's issues and most specifically with the millions of dollars that is coming in to Lorraine County via the land bank and the Port Authority is a sub-recipient to accomplish all that work. So, last thing I want to do is pick up the paper tomorrow and read that, you know, the county is hiring people again. We're merely moving people around. And as you know, we, we parted company with our last port director and the SBDC separated from us and is going to be located on the college campus, which created openings. This is not a increase in the number of employees.
No.
You're going to find them going to state that a lot when.
Anybody else? Come on up. If you could just state your name and where you're from for the record, please.
Okay. Kathy Payne, the Chief Deputy from the Lorraine County Clerk of Courts Office. I'd like to clarify or answer any questions you have about Mr. Nabokowski's request for handicap parking or access to the Justice Center Building. Is there something specific that?
Well, I saw that there was a request and that Mr. Cortez had responded to that request, just saying, no, that it's not, can't happen right now because we don't have the funding. And I was just inquiring as to whether there was a no-cost solution to that problem. And that's what I'm looking to see, if there is.
We have an agreement right now with the Elyria Police Department. They're not going to ticket the handicap spots in front of the Justice Center Building. It came to our attention that our employees were actually utilizing those handicap spaces, all of them. And that made it very difficult for the handicap people who need our services to come into our building. So as a second option to a secure rear entrance to the building, we were thinking possibly some spaces could be assigned handicap in the courthouse lot for employees and then we can leave the public spots open for people who need access to our building. So I don't see that having a cost associated with it if it's the only option we have.
But then they're going to have to walk from the back to the front?
No, no, the courthouse lot, which is right in the front.
Oh, the courthouse lot.
So they're not walking around the building. The handicap spots behind the building are going unused because these are people who need knee replacements and walking is very difficult for them. So if you assign some spaces in the Justice Center Lot, it's just crossing the street to gain access to the building versus walking all the way around.
Well, that was-
So that was what we thought as a second option.
The Justice Center Lot you're talking about, south of Third Street?
The Justice Center Lot that is north of Third Street, but behind the Justice Center Building, forcing employees to walk all the way around to gain access to the building.
Correct. I thought you said there was another option that you wanted at another park.
Old courthouse, where the adult probation is. Yes, directly behind the spots that are in front of the building. There are some employees that park over there. We were just wanting some spots to be assigned handicap for those employees who need and have the handicap placards or plates.
Could we, could we revise those lot, those spaces? Are those our spaces or are they the city's spaces?
Some are ours, well up, well up against the building.
The ones in the center area where you sort of like turn around at if you were-
I have no, no ability to control that parking over there. If you want to put more handicap there, we cannot assign the handicap spots. We do not assign parking to employees.
I was under the impression that the spots at the courthouse were ours, were the county spots.
Some of them are the county, some of them out by the road or not, okay?
Okay.
The, but once again, even if we add handicap spots there, it's going to be on a first come, first served basis.
And our employees are generally the first ones there, leaving the ones in front of the building open for the general public to access throughout the day. It's my understanding from EPD that they're getting complaints because those spots are never open, which is true. They are not open. Those people do not go out to lunch. They have much difficulty walking. They park there at 8:00 in the morning and they do not leave until the building is closed. So it never opens a handicap spot to the public during the course of the day. And we're becoming very sensitive to that.
Mm-hmm.
So I just thought I'd clarify that and give you an opportunity to understand where we're coming from.
Can we revise those spots to make them handicap in order for them to park there?
I have to look at, I can't take it, I'm sitting here.
Can you look into that for us then?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
That's going to be on revised code, won't it, for Elyria, so.
Pardon me?
The cities actually dictate where handicap spots can be.
Yeah, but if we have our own spots that we can make handicap to free up the city handicap spots.
Yeah, he has, he has to look in. I remember there's something-
See what's ours and what isn't ours. That's where convoluted parking over there anyway.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the board? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session as outlined by both the Administrator and Assistant County Prosecutor.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.